Okay. Welcome to the Western County Commissioners Meeting of November first, 2022. Will you all rise and recover? Henry, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before you have an agenda, there are a couple changes that we have to do because of scheduling conflicts with Drew Bauer. So Becky, if you'd like to start, please.
Okay, so we need to move Drew's 10:45 to 11:45. So that will put new business at 10:45. And Michael has court, so we'll need to move old business to 11:15. And Michael to 12 o'clock, please. I need to add the extension office under new business for discussion of an additional phone line. And then I need to add Resolution 2022-26, Amendment to the 2022-2023 Budget. Suzie got the ARPA Local Assistant Tribal Consistency funds in half of it, so we need to accept that into the budget. And also, the airport received some funds, and we need to accept that in as well.
Okay, are there any other additions and changes? Did everybody get those? You're carrying on. Sure, we're entertaining.
What are we doing, 11 o'clock?
11 o'clock is... Well, extension office getting fitted under new business at 10:45. Old business is 11:15.
Oh, we have an easy discussion.
Easy, yeah. At 12 is Michael.
11:15 got moved to 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
For a second?
Second.
I'm moving to second to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has passed. It's 9:05, and it is 9:05. Or is that in session?
Go into session. Your last session. 16:45. A, aye, aye, aye. Again?
Was that number three?
Right. 16:44. A, aye, aye, aye.
For a second?
Second.
I'm moving to second to go into session. First, I want to... I want to say session 16:44. A, aye, aye, aye. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay. Okay, we are back in session. 9:45. For us, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything, any item, anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm moving to second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, go ahead.
That does include the 2022-26, but our resolution.
Will you state that one again for us, so that everybody knows?
Resolution 2022-26 Amendment to the 2022-2023 Budget. It's adding the ARPA Local Assistant Tribal Consistency and the airport grant.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has passed. We assign these. Okay, even though we did, and it's my mistake because it was there ready for us, so I'm going to rescind our motion to approve the consent agenda because we need to pull this MasterCard bill, warrant number 750, for discussion. What we have is a voucher, so I would ask that we rescind that motion. So I need to... I don't know how that would work.
Just make the... Let us have a discussion. We can just make the... We can just deny that voucher and rescind the amendment.
Okay. So what we have is a voucher that nothing's correlating. We've got... We've got receipts, but we can't see if we can correlate with the... So maybe we need to do some further investigation on this and see if we can get things to correlate with everybody like to work out. But it just, if you guys can get it to work out, that's awesome. All this design?
Mm-hmm.
You think they do? Yeah. Okay, that's what's... Okay. We had that conversation with her before, so I'm hoping it won't happen again. I had that conversation with her. We all did.
Agreement of the plan before the conversation?
Yep.
I think we're okay.
If you can get it to add up, I just couldn't. That's what I was missing is the fortune you missed. You've got.
Where'd you see it, Tom?
Oh, there's... Here's this bill. And then there's another one for the front here.
3777.
Yep. Did the math, my turn. Yeah. Yeah.
Got enough, yeah. This one's interesting, too.
Iron paper, it folds out?
No.
Don't think so. Steaming.
Yeah.
So my question was, I mean, what I highlighted told us that. But that's dispute. So I'm guessing, and I don't know if the topic goes down that prior, like, are the pain goes separately? Or we, I mean, are they to pay it all?
So this is adding up to...
What they're highlighting.
Right. What's actually doing with those expenses?
So I think what you would do is that they're accurately saying they're only paying that.
Carrying over.
Carrying new. That would be the question.
Yeah.
We're gonna ensure.
Exactly, thank you.
Was that that deal where they gave them the years?
Yeah.
Ability to push it off? Because COVID.
Yep.
Every oil loan account.
Might just want to actually go on.
Yeah. They should pick on all years. Has to go there really good. I gotta be honest, I had to drop a dog out.
What's that?
I had to drop a dog out through this line of that. I'm not gonna get it.
Okay. Everybody's got their... Most of your papers signed. So just so that, you know, we do approve your minor support. Sub... My brain is bleh. Minor, subdigen, yes, been signed. So we won't have a sign to have.
You will sign it after the meeting?
Yep, it was approved, then we will sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm not needed during the year.
Nope.
And I need to sign that for me officially.
Well, I'll call Rick to come in. They'll need to sign it, and then I'll call you to come in. And I have your number.
Oh.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is Rick Perry Williams for... He's been here 30 years. I'll be going to project that over. See if we have a problem with that. We should start putting better, see if we're pricing options. The over ones for them. I got one for that. My priced pipe for replace the bridge on the Christianson Road. We paid the bridge about $30,000. Now looking for two seven footers. Just the one left behind. It's kind of tough to put very good overflow. Now I'm there. I'll have to run it by down the hall straggly. I appreciate that very much. Might be two if we got two pipes there. You know, if we do that, we can come down through those trees. At least we've got two pods. We already set this one. I don't know if you guys want to do that kind of a moment. And we could have to do the hydrology report. I'm sure guys want me to just take it out of our line item. I could order one this year if I do, maybe another one. See if we start from there. One of the guys.
We've got that down on the road. We were talking last couple of days. It's still been pretty good shape. You don't think that hand thing would be bad when that's where it is?
It shouldn't. My team of nurses that I did, they look about that. Please, we should answer a lot of county issues. I'm actually review our county road fund reports. And who did recommend, he said, for general use conditions, we might need to do a hydrology report there. He said it's simply, he said it shouldn't be that expensive. For six thousand, I'd like to see that.
Five thousand, ten thousand.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be ten probably.
I wonder if we just take that line item.
Is there a second?
One second.
I'm moving to second to... Just a general fund line item. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion has carried. Go ahead.
I'm on that, because kind of, I mean, yes, we're getting fills every month for the old Highway 85 project. And we were at first, you know, just observing that out of our county road fund line item. But it's, we're up to over 9,000 on it now. I didn't know, are we just supposed to be taking that out of county road fund? Or is there money earmarked for that project?
Actually, there is money for that. So we have put aside, at least, I believe, 100,000 for that project. At one time, we had approved that it would be 5,000. And I believe what it said, it is stated that it is 300,000. It has been earmarked to be such. What we need to do is request that the treasurer put it into a line item and allow your department to spend it out of that account. Is there any discussion on it that will not? That has been, you know, that has been put aside, especially for that, but it'd be a general... A general account instead of being the county road fund. Now, the matching money on that would be much more than that, which also can come out with the county road fund. But we had, several years ago, when this, this bridge started out, we had put that money aside. So I guess what I'm requesting is that we put it, take it away from the investment that is, that we have saved for, and put it into the line item to allow the northern bridge to do that. Any discussion, go ahead.
When did we put it, or set aside?
I think what we could do, and it would certainly be up to the clerk to provide them that says that had an account that is specifically for Old Highway 85.
Thank you.
What I'm asking is what line do we set it aside in? Was it set aside for this?
It is, we have put it in as a investment.
Oh. Good.
I think that makes it easier, I'm fine with it.
Does that help?
Yeah.
We have a... So we're making a sweep on this project. Sounds like the project is... It's not to make a decision on what you're going to do for us.
Okay, did you hear that part? Okay, so they'll want to know what our decision is concerning what we want to do with the old Highway 85. We know what we're doing with the bridge, but in the agreement was that when we exchanged 451 for Old Highway 85, what we were going to do with that road. So go ahead.
You were gone at that meeting when they came, and there was a lot of discussion, a lot of public showed up for that deal. And there's a lot of things were spitballed to the engineer out of... Sharon, I forget his name. Sorry, I missed.
Isaac?
Yeah. And he was gonna, wasn't he gonna work up some, some new ideas for us, I think?
Especially on that covert.
On the covert, yeah. Because there is some issues that we may have other things that they might be able to attach to it. I don't know when they were planning on getting back to us because our engineers doesn't exist anymore here in Newcastle, so.
And I did visit with Scott Taylor, he's the district engineer. Because I was understanding they were gonna take an overall look at everything when I wrote the culverts. And that was my understanding, and... I thought they were headed there after that meeting.
So are you under the impression they're, they're wanting to know sooner than that?
Well, well, I did the Scott, you know, he wasn't under the impression that they were going to look at the culverts. He said that wasn't quite an urgent scholar. He said it can be added. He said, you know, we can change that.
Well, it's my opinion that we were going to do, at least do the culverts. I mean, those are two dangerous, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think there, if you was gonna run some costs, even ideas, and I, I was thinking about a week or so ago, we hadn't heard anything. But I don't know.
Let's ask him again.
And it's those... Apparently, there's colored out there that's ebed or something, and two of them, that was the major concern among several of the concerned people that were here. That that got fixed properly, like, overexcavated and, and reset before we did anything with...
Okay, because that was the discussion I remember for a couple of years now. So for this to be changed again. I think we need to get it, pardon the pun, but we need to have concrete idea of what we're doing here based on that. So just, let's ask him again so that we have some general idea. I, I think this board is pretty, is pretty set on the fact that we want to have those culverts, at least. Am I right?
You said there was something about widening, I forget that.
With the bridge, they were gonna, they were talking about widening it when that big bridge was in. But the culverts are gonna, you know, be reset. It's a big hump.
Well, yes.
There's no way to do anything without pulling them and then...
And we will have a conversation about the bridge because the bridge is going to be wider than it was. So that's going to take some inter, you know, some other discussion concerning what is going to happen with the easement. Although we have the easement, there also was a question, as we were discussing at one time, there's a movement which happened. It's pushing the easement that we have.
Yeah, that's something. On that one corner, the road is quite over. Up against the easement. It's not, it doesn't really seem like that easement.
So that will be have to be adjusted in a conversation also had about that. They will, and they'll bring that to us, too. But I think right now, if we can convey that we are more or less insistent upon the culverts. So, okay. I think that we also need to have a motion that we're going to move the money that we put aside. That is earmarked for the old Highway 85 to be put and transferred into that line item for there to spend that instead of coming out of, of just a general. Are we okay with that?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Sure.
It's been moved in second to move the 300,000 that has been set aside slash earmarked for the old Highway 85 bridge project to be moved into a... For the northern bridge to expand on that project.
With the treasurer.
Yes. Well, we'll have a, we'll have a... Is there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion has passed. Okay, we'll get... Okay, we'll get that too, so that we can start. Okay.
We have also a review for all the existing and, you know, process of doing the county road fund manual. They're still looking for twenty-five hundred dollar commitment for each county. Wide out checking fifty thousand on it. The county is checking a little too.
I believe we can take that, we can have a fund too. Don't we claim for here, okay. So the problem that we have is it's very hard to understand what the county road standards committee manual is. It has, it's been out there for a while, twenty eleven, I believe. Anyway, it's very hard to comprehend and to understand. It's mostly directed at engineers and such, and so they are in the process of rewriting it. Hopefully they're writing three different menu, menus, manuals for commissioners for road and bridge and also for the engineers. So it's the pleasure of the board to go twenty-five hundred towards that.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Remove in second to approve, to appoint member to go towards the county road standards in the manual. Any other discussion?
Why isn't this something the legislature should have?
When it was discussed, and I give it back to you, but the decision, I mean, they made a couple of different comments made in adding the difference of allowing that money to be spent on equipment. The part of the also discussion was that we would redo the.
It's gonna be. Twenty-three times twenty-five hundred is probably the one.
I'll grant, I'll grant you that that is expensive. The problem is right now there is really so much disparity on different interpretations of that manual that it's not very uniform. And so what's happening is your county road fund committee is getting all kinds of different stuff coming in. And they have a tough time determining, does that fit within the rules, does not, not fit within the rules? And so if they can put the handbook out that is more, explains it better, I think we're better off. Go ahead.
We paid twenty thousand for a handbook for our county. I mean, I assume that this.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
This is probably gonna be a, I mean, how many attorneys are looking at it too? You want to making sure it's up to snuff.
And it's a, sounds like a two year process.
Right, it's going to finish. Go ahead.
Yeah, the way, you could have fifteen road and bridge supervisors go through it and they'd all come up with fifteen different opinions on how they can spend the money. And it gets down to the Cheyenne and board there is like, no, this is not allowed. But it's, hopefully they get that all straightened out, so it's more cut and dry.
And I think they're getting a lot of complaints. I learned more, but now it's on the phone with my team and they can, but we've done that manual a lot of times. It's just, there's a lot of creativity.
Question.
Okay, this is my call. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion is passed.
Play this in rapid, it should be done today hopefully. Still, let me see what they just trying to do, three block there. And then replace the cattle cars and replace the one above, okay. They'll come be ruined. We sound the bill for it. We have, we have to get a chat, but they know we replaced that, they were out there last week when we had this one. Replace one of the lunch road and we're getting one on the corner this morning. Putting that heat in this big coal plant.
Okay, have you got any questions for that?
Well, he sent over a couple of graphs of some road use agreements. The, I guess, when I read through them, you know, it's been a deep dive and acceptable to me. The one, the, the draft you had from the county, is that the one we used with one oh?
It's a little different. I don't know that that one was ever used, cause it still had, you know, there was red print on it, question marks and stuff. So I don't know if it was just a draft that, that the way you made it use.
I think we should have a copy of it. On the side of four oh.
I forgot.
Yeah, it's on my, I think it's.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else? Okay.
You want us to review that or?
Go ahead.
I mean, is that just an FYI or?
Yeah, I just kind of want some ideas on it, I guess. I don't know how we can go about forcing any of it, but it's definitely an issue we've got. You know, when you grow also in Haver County to use our roads to get, cause our roads are better. By the time they're done, our roads are down, they're hogs and roads in really bad shape.
Did you find the other agreement that we had or, when they had that other, well?
No. No, I think that's kind of.
Do you remember telling one several years ago, when you were writing a letter to Haver County, asking them to use the Haver County China River Road?
Yeah, I remember a little bit about that. It seemed like we approached them on road use agreement with that. Have they got finalized that for now?
That was the discussion that we had in the, it was on file, we can go find that and see what we've done. So, go ahead.
I don't think we ever got one on that. It's the oil company just kind of turned their nose up at us and kept using the roads.
Sorry, it is getting, it's pretty bad now. And that's, and it's gonna be incredible when they start moving sand. That's gonna be incredible. And so I think it's appropriate to write something to Haver County.
Another issue we've got in the minutes or another problem that I've been hearing, Craig. You know, I know it was just a verbal agreement between them and Rick, but they said they would provide that suppression when they need drugs and it doesn't happen. It's a company that has huge hands, but they can, that was, you know, I told him, you know, dust is there, this problem like there. You know, they tell you one thing, then you get to do something, it's a different story. But it'd be kind of nice to have something that you could put to them, you know, this or something writing.
I think our neighbors to the north have been pretty successful in getting some road use agreements on some vet night operations and similar deals we're dealing with in Haver County. They're all on that stuff up in the South Dakota process or, you know, if there not be a lot of revenue, we could get some use off of it and it's. And all those companies have an interest in having good roads too, because it tears their equipment up when they're. I think it, it's something we ought to kind of pursue and.
I think that would be appropriate. Okay, anything else? Anything else, Greg? Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Good morning, we love you. So Sarah Gregory, what's in common public health? So I just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates and then just go over just a few things. As far as flu shots go, we've just, we've had a lot, a lot of people. We've been super busy with that, most of our clinic times are occupied by that. We've also expanded our hours to kind of meet those needs of others in the community. We're just going with once a month right now and then we're gonna kind of see how the demand goes for that. But we've already got people scheduled into those hours, so that's been good. Michelle and I completed tobacco treatment specialist program, so we can now offer smoking cessation to the community. So that's kind of nice to, to bring people in and, and be able to help them with that. I'm also collaborating with the jail to start maybe providing some jail health. Kind of start, you know, usually a little bit of public health does go in and help with that kind of stuff. Depending on the services, some jails in the counties do have their own nurses. So there's gotta be some, you know, a, a line there, but we are working at maybe seeing what we can do for, for them up there. And then also, I didn't know, I did send an email at the beginning of October in regards to Krista and I having a credit card to be able to, to do our travel and things like that. Didn't know if you guys were able to discuss that.
I don't think we have put it on our agenda to discuss it, because I think what the issue was, was the state versus county employee issue. And so I think we probably should have that conversation again, because one of the things that we've run into is a state employee, the county would still be responsible. And we still need to investigate where that we are. So, okay. So if we could just cut that back on, we'll come back to the chair.
So in the meantime, we do have something that coming up here for travel. It is a mandatory training for Krista and I in Afton. Weather depending, of course. So that would be something we would use the, that credit card for. So in the meantime, we're just kind of stuck.
So let me put this before you. Corinne is a county employee. We can certainly issue her one with the understanding of writing, you know, that she signed our agreement. She has one, okay. Yeah. They, they all have one. Okay. So if she has one, then at least you can schedule your hotel and that or, sure. Okay. Would be, you probably may have to just get them both to have one. Maybe we'll just get. Yep. Anything else? Any questions? Anything else for us? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, you're rough. Have you seen any action on that?
Yeah, it's done.
It is.
Yeah. They had it done, I swear, like in a day and a half. They just, yeah, they moved, so it looks very nice, thank you.
We had to voucher go through something about your alarm, did you get that?
Yeah, so our, our alarm through the, Krista, do you know like what is the name of that company? So it, it basically is through our, the fire system that we have. It kept alarming because there was, they were getting dust. Dust was setting off this fire alarm constantly throughout the day. So, yeah, we have to go through this, this company. And I can get you more information on that, cause I'm kind of new with it too, how that all works. But they had to have somebody come in and reset it and do all this stuff with it. So right now it's been working okay, but we'll see once it.
Well, it was just my question, if we might have to go through, cause it said something about some other information, so just send it to us.
Yeah, I can see what I can find on it, cause yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of different how they, they work with this, this company. And they're the ones that do our alarms, but then somebody else differently comes in and kind of does the inspection on it and things like that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, any other question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This one Phil Seal? Okay.
They say your name and who you're representing.
Sounds good. Good morning, my name is Chad Kraus and I am representing the BLM Newcastle field office.
Okay.
Commissioners, thank you for making time on your agenda to squeak me in. The, the primary purpose of why I requested it was just the opportunity to be able to introduce myself to all of you, all of you at once. My name is Chad Kraus and I'm the new field manager at the BLM office here in town. Well, but everyone, we've been here about three weeks, my family and I. Everyone we've met have been so kind and welcoming, it's been fantastic. They say, oh, you know Newcastle's a small town. Well, my wife Josie and I were central Montana natives. She's from a town called Stanford, if you ever heard of it. It's about four hundred and fifty people. I was from Arlington, it's a little under a thousand now, it's a, it's a die in town. And so, anyway, we're, we're glad to be here and we have two daughters. Have daughter Chloe, she's eight, and a daughter, a younger daughter that's three. We had our first kid late in life and then we had our second kid unexpectedly even later in life. I always make the joke that I get how it works, but life, life finds a way. And so everyone seems very excited that we brought, brought kids to town. Chloe, she's attended Newcastle elementary, she's in second grade. And our younger daughter, she's going to preschool over at the Weston County Children's Center. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't say though, that those facilities have been outstanding and the teachers and caregivers have been fantastic. It's a huge asset, huge asset to the community.
You're welcome.
Thank you. From a, a personal level, I guess a little bit about me and my background and just some of my philosophies, you know, coming into the community. I'm a geological engineer by, by education. Got an engineering degree from Montana Tech in debut. And I've been with the BLM a little over twenty years now. Spent thirteen years in Montana, kind of in the central Montana area. And then the last seven before coming here, I've been the assistant field manager for minerals and lands in the Cody Field Office over on the other side of the mountain. And so supervised the oil and gas mining and mineral related programs, programs there. And so went offered the chance to come over here to be the field manager. We jumped at it to, to move our family here. Like I said, I, I guess, I, I've come into it, I consider it a privilege to be a public servant and, you know, serve the United States citizenry on managing their public lands and their minerals. And having said that, I, I want you all to know that I'm, I'm very cognizant that the decisions that are made on those lands have the greatest impact on, on those that live, live and work here and live off those lands. You know, BLM's mission in itself is inherent with conflict. On one hand, we're supposed to provide for oil and gas development, mining, timber harvest, cattle grazing, and provide for recreation. You know, protect the cultural resources that are out there, wildlife habitat. And so sometimes it can, it can definitely feel like trying to thread a needle. I only have two asks maybe of the commission. One ask is if, if you guys get a gut feeling that something's heading sideways or something's brewing, give me a call. I'll leave my, a card here with y'all. It's been my experience through my career that usually when a issue's brewing, it's usually there's a miscommunication that's occurred somewhere along the lines. And my other hope is that I can, through time, form a, a working relationship with y'all so that I can leverage that with the citizens of Weston County and be a pub, better public servant to the Weston County citizens in, in my role by, by leveraging that through you. So I hope to have a good relationship there. I'll just mention one item that may be of interest to the commission. And I, I say that, cause I see it's, it's later on the agenda. Uh, excuse me, one BLM item of interest, and I won't take up too much more of your time. At some point in the relatively near future here, we will be embarking on revising our resource management plan. And as you likely all know, and I, I won't elaborate too much on the background, that's our broad scale plan. Thirty thousand foot view of these lands and minerals, what are their allocations? And we're required to update them every twenty to thirty years. I think Newcastle's last time was like ninety-nine or maybe two thousand-ish, so we're right in that realm. What those plans are, they're not like a site specific plan of like an oil well here, a fence here, timber harvest here type of thing. They're, like I said, looking at a thirty thousand foot view of what lands are open to what uses. And one example might be fluid minerals or oil and gas. That's kind of the easiest for me to get my mind wrapped around, but you know, what lands are open for leasing development? And for those lands that are open, you know, what type of protections are in place for developing those resources? So that's kind of the intent of that plan. Couple of key messages there. And I apologize, I'm speaking to the choir. Weston County is a cooperating agency, so what that means is literally have a seat at the table during the development of that process. And there's gonna be a number of obviously opportunities for public involvement outside of that. I do wanna, so I've been here about three weeks and it didn't take me long to start hearing about one item that maybe did not particularly go well. We had tried to, and by we, I wasn't here personally, but I'll say it's a collective team. We had tried to do some preliminary outreach, that the intent was just to give advance heads notice to the public and others that we were gonna start down this revision process. And I think it's a good lesson that despite best intended efforts, if the, the messages that got out there were confusing and maybe not received by recipients timely. And so on one hand, I'll look at that as a silver lining, but glad the lessons were learned trying to give that advanced notice and not during the process. trying to give that advance notice and not during the process. So just wanted to touch that. It didn't take me long to, with being around town, to, to hear that, so. With that, that's, that's kind of all I had. I, I would do my best to answer questions. If I can't, I'll have to follow up. Like I said, it's, it's kind of been like drinking from a fire hose the last three weeks to get up to speed on everything. But I would follow up on a question if I can't answer it here immediately.
Chad, how's your data structure? Who do you answer to or are they out of?
I answer to Kevin Christensen, is the High Plains District Manager in Casper. And so the High Plains District is, comprises Casper, Buffalo, and Newcastle Field Offices. And so I report to Kevin Christensen in High Plains and Casper.
You have any questions? Well, welcome. There was an issue with that, that announcement, it was not very timely, so a lot of people didn't make it. I don't think it also got to some people until after the event. So that is appropriate to, to help us out with that. Also, you are more than welcome to come to the commissioner meeting, because we also believe in coordination too. Now while coordination isn't always held as firmly as cooperating agency is, this county does believe in coordination. So we would ask that you stick with that and give us a heads-up on any of that. We will also give you a copy of our manuals. Okay? That will give us some idea too of what we say. But we would like to see if we're able to give a heads-up if things come up.
Absolutely. Would you like me to attend every commission meeting, or just when I start to get also the feel of, hey, something's coming down the pipe, I should give you guys a heads-up on?
That's what we would like, go ahead.
Chad, are you familiar with the event? You may not be yet, but there's a company looking at doing a midnight mine in southeast Weston County. And I believe some of it's on BLM, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they do say it.
Yeah, they have to go through BLM or something like that.
Do you have any?
I'm only familiar to the extent of that we approved the mining on BLM, but I had heard that there was a matter of whether or not a road was county.
So your guys' end is pretty well completed then, okay.
I caveat that with, my understanding is that we approved that mine. But that's literally the limited extent that I know, so.
Any other questions? Well, we certainly appreciate you stopping by and look forward to seeing you again, welcome to our world.
Oh, we're pumped to be here. We've, we've loved it, the kids are having a great time, and so, that's what matters. Can I leave cards with y'all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Once again, I appreciate the time on the agenda, I don't take that lightly, I know you've got a lot of matters to work through.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you much, appreciate that.
You know what, you gotta wait fourteen and a half minutes for your daughter's child to grow up.
Did that resonate with you?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it, it's a pleasure.
Thanks. Yep. Okay, we won't have new business till ten forty-five, next break? Uh, we decided on?
Yeah, we'll be here.
So let's take a break till ten forty-five.
That's too bad. And good. Get yourself all pumped up and ready.
I was joined to.
Full page, I was a different kind of high-end supplier, stuff like that.
Yesterday. Medical, no, he was. I'm sure. My stuff was, was advising, you know, on all my stuff.
You know, since anymore, you got all this stuff, you're hitting.
The whole event was really good, though.
It doesn't matter if it's cold out.
Could have heat there?
Oh, yeah. You had heater in that? That's the only thing I couldn't figure out, the heaters come off the exhaust, so you want to make sure the exhaust system's pretty hard on access in one thing.
And a different one.
Why am I?
It's water-cooled stuff. They're so much more efficient than air-cooled.
They are, it's just the heat of the water, I think on the old ones.
They're standing down there.
Testy's a lot of the...
The way you can transfer heat off, that helps too.
I like that, yeah, you almost have it. By the time you get warmed up, you do your, your run-up and stuff, you got heat coming out. But you get a, you ask it leaking a little bit, or crack manhole, and that's bad news.
He said what's amazing.
Like a wrong broom. See, even his first, five years, he likes first, like, he's tired. He's still up there, big and wonderful, I think he's just clean air.
Oh, yeah.
Something, there's a gas, a match.
So they're trying.
Smoke, and they thought, they thought it was smoke. They just got up there when they did something, trim some just, this little cap. Bad smoke.
I mean, you got your horse, you're, I mean, if they all, they're going out treating, those planes are the best thing. And you annual them every year, just to take it to best attention in every way, but obviously.
Like they said, luckily. Nothing, it basically, first try the cap. Yeah, the way, boom, started to clear the cap, like, okay, they knew it wasn't, they had us.
Try that a little bit. When everybody's sleeping, I think that's not a good thing, including the pilot.
The ground's starting to freeze.
Oh, did you take him down?
Yeah.
We did. We're limited to about ten not crossed, when they're great now.
Yeah.
They didn't want him frozen.
Yeah.
Winter'd be a little bit longer than that, most of the time it's kind of, you know, we're playing, swinging. Not a headwind, you can get off the ground.
I don't think it's, it's, it's.
Full tire, bush pilot, big oversized, so I was bumping it on the brake, and airborne.
Airborne.
So they come in, hits the wind, just high.
I was watching a video, real cool, yeah, like you said, the time you drive it is, they come in, a lot of some of these, like, like outback rivers and stuff like that.
Same bars.
Yeah. Where the water's down a little bit, so they got pretty easy. They kind of be in, with the wind tapping down, down the canyon there, and then you just touch those tires down the edge of the water, slow down and roll right on. You don't hear much at all.
I don't like those stairs.
And then a little bump, and off you're going.
I'd like, I've always worn them.
You can't.
One of them, it's got, put, oversized, loaded on the...
I mean, can you tell me?
Well, actually, even bigger. I like the sound of that. I just, I've always been a hard tire giving, like, you've got too much tire on the back.
Sorry about that coughing fit, that coffee went down the wrong pipe. I hate that. That's one more and we're even. Yeah, that went on live. I wish Connie had wanted to see that hood. I mean, it looks like a cobra ready to bite.
I almost want, I almost want it to be done for her, though. That way she can enjoy it, if it gets faded.
Take her to that hundred and forty mile an hour on four fifty-one there, huh?
Don't put that on the record.
Uh, too late. I wonder if it'll do one fifty.
I think it will.
I was looking at other hoods of last week sometime. We lucked out.
I don't.
I mean, I don't like any of the others near as much, really. There's one I like, but... Yeah, it's great to be the one that we could get, that, uh, we lucked out. That's beautiful. I guess I really shouldn't say those things on live video, Brian watches these sometimes. So it wasn't that I'm going to, it's a matter of knowing I could. Oh, well, there's Brian now.
Maybe I should do that if I can.
No, it's okay. You block Marty, so the view is better. Oh, I mean, uh, ooh.
Walter, I love you too. All right, Becky, come up, please. Oh, wait a minute.
I'm Becky Hayman with the extension office, and thank you, Becky, for having me to the internet. I had sent this information to you a little, a few weeks ago. We are in need of another phone line in the extension office. This summer, we had an intern, and she's either reaching over Abby, she has to wait for a phone line. We have two lines and we're four people. We just were on top of each other this summer. Plus, we now have a part-time Sensible Nutrition Program educator who will be coming up from last vacation. So we've got an office space for her, but there's no phone over there where she'll be seated or have her desk area. So we went, reached out to Collins, 'cause I guess that's who did the phones in the building. And they suggested that we go with a cell station addition to the existing phone system. That, where the, when you first come in the door, where the two other desks are at, there's a great big two and a half foot wall there. It's an exterior wall, I guess, and he's, and there's no phone line or anything existing in that. So this was the cheapest way for us to get an additional phone line, was to go with a cell station and add it to the existing. So this is their coordinate for that process that I was looking into. So we were just wondering what your thoughts were for that, and whether, you know, we can move forward with this expense.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For the building.
Wouldn't a cordless phone allow you to have a phone in there?
It's getting, the problem is we need one more line. I, I don't know, because this is how we set it up. This would give us one more line, so three people could be on the phones versus just two. 'Cause right now, if, if Abby's on the phone and I'm on the phone, then Erin's waiting to free up a line. She can't make any calls or do anything, so...
You guys are like jam-packed in two phone lines?
We are, Tony. You should have seen it this summer. There'd be, I'd have, Abby'd be taking messages, and then by time she'd hang up, give me a message, I'd be sitting there waiting to call out again. You know, we'd call donors, we'd call, you should have seen my phone. My phone's blown up, I'll call with candy food preservation questions. And I don't know how else to, to ease it up. And people will say, "Well, I called and the phone just rings and rings and rings." Well, there's no other, no other option. I mean, I think it eventually goes to waste now, assuming, but we have a both tight up, tight down. We do an awful lot, like, like email also, as much as we can. But otherwise, I have to get out my purse myself, if it's something I really need to get on immediately.
I, I'm assuming there's going to be another, like, thirty or forty dollar a month fee for the additional.
I'm assuming yes. This is just for the phone, the travel, as you can see, the inclusions, the time to, the labor to this.
Becky, this has nothing to do with, I mean, a while back, you asked for more broadband.
And this has nothing to do with the internet now.
So is it just another, they're just tying into another existing line on the same trunk? So there's no additional broadband that you'll be able to access with this, do you know?
I don't, and I'm assuming it won't have, it's just strictly phone usage, it's, it's not internet. So it's strictly making phone calls.
Then you'll have to have a cell phone.
It'll be a, it'll be a cell station. Because he said in order to put a hard line to drill through all that exterior wall was way more expensive than this option. This was the cheapest option.
Is that the vault back in that corner?
Um, no, but I'm wondering if the drive-through wasn't an addition. And so where we're at's kind of an addition, so it's that great big wall. And we discussed going through the ceiling and, and over, but there's not an outlet. You might just even plug into there.
I don't understand it enough, honestly, that he won't be using a, a data system, you know, because of cell service. And that we get charged if he uses more data. See, I, I don't.
I see what you're saying, no, I, he did not explain that to me. I assume we would get a third, another rollover number. So like, most people call three five three one, and we have a second number that I don't really tend to, but it is, but it rolls over when the first one's busy. And so I'm assuming this would be set up with a third number that we could answer.
We just need more information.
Yeah, sorry, 'cause it's been a, probably a month.
You know, I read this, it says that it's a two-cent channel cell station, but then right at the next corner, the telephone, it's the next.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wonder if it's a true, true cell station, or just a, basically, or what they're using, like the terminology, cell station for a cordless phone.
It's a basically a cordless phone.
See, that's, that's what I'm kind of taking out of this, they're saying it's a cell station, but you're not.
That's what they're calling it, but I think you're right, it, I think it's basically a cordless phone system they're setting up that ties into the existing phone system that we have here.
Did they give you any kind of RT, give you any kind of idea what additional, that additional phone number's going to run?
No, we didn't. But I'm assuming it's probably going to be the forty to fifty dollar range.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, maybe in the next meeting, if we could reach out with Ted Johnson, like, just a phone call or something, and just have him explain it maybe, and then have an idea of what... 'Cause maybe you need something even better that gives you more... Because maybe you need something even better that gives you more broadband too, and if it's not that much more expensive, I don't know.
Yeah. You wanna call him right now?
Good.
We may have time. Do you have time?
Yeah, you can put that on speaker maybe.
This one?
Yeah.
Uh, you want which one?
Matter which one you go to?
No, I've got it. It just needs to be plugged in over here.
Oh, well, what's this going to?
Don't plug it in. I don't know.
Did you just unplug it?
No, it was just laying here on the floor.
Oh, well, could you plug it in, please?
Which one? There's two extra outlets here.
It doesn't work.
Try it now.
Can I get a dial tone?
No, no.
Not too many plugs.
No, you got it now?
Yeah.
Hi, Ted. This is Vicki Hayman with the Weston County Extension Office. And you had come...
How are you doing?
Great. I'm at the Commissioner's meeting. And can you answer a few questions? Is this basically the phone for the Extension Office? It says cell station addition. Is it primarily a cordless phone system?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna have to plead the interment a little bit on this because I'm not the phone guy. Jeff is the phone guy.
Is that who came to our office?
Yes. And so he brought it all to me and I just put it in a proposal and took it off today. But as I understand it, that there is a cordless ability with it, but it's not all cordless phones.
Go ahead. Let's take your name.
Hi, Mr. Johnson. This is Commissioner Taylor. I see your cost for installing is one thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars, but what is the monthly charge on top of that, uh, to have that additional line?
Again, I, I'm not the guy. I, I said it to you. So typically, my phone system, if there's a provider, and I don't know if it's clarified or who, if you guys are using somebody and this is just a additional phone portion that's added to it?
So you're saying this is just the line to set it up? We'd still have to have a provider for the service?
I'll tell you what, Mr. Taylor, let me give you Jeff's phone number. And, and you can call Jeff directly because he's the one who built it. I literally only put in the packet and sent it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we need his number.
Yeah, what's the number?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, let me give you the number here for you. His number is, that's wrong, Jeff. There's too many Jeffs here. Uh, three oh seven, six eight zero, seven one five three.
Three oh seven, six eight zero, seven one five three. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
See ya. Sorry.
This is Jeff.
Hi, Jeff. This is Vicki Hayman with the Weston County Extension Office. And I am at the Commissioner's meeting. You're on speakerphone. They have a few questions about this cell station addition that we're wanting in our office. Okay, first question I'm gonna give you to, um, Mr. Don Taylor.
Hi, Jeff. This is Commissioner Taylor. Uh, first question, I, I see you have the initial cost of one thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars, but, um, I'm assuming there'll be another line cost once that's in there from whatever provider we have. Is that correct?
Uh, no, not unless you're adding a telephone line.
That's weird.
Well, I thought that's what we were doing, Jeff, with this...
You're, you're adding an extension. Your, your telephone lines go to your telephone equipment. Your extensions go to the phone on your desk, where basically that's how it talks to the telephone equipment. So you can have three telephone lines and twenty telephones. So when we say line, what we're talking about is, is the line from the telephone company to the telephone box. So if now, when we're talking about that cell station, all we need to do is to mount the cell station someplace where we have access to the PBX. The reason why we're talking about a cell station with cordless phone is because you don't really have a clear wire path into that room where you want your telephone, because it's a big, big brick wall in there. And you're, you know, the cost of drilling a line through that and getting it is less than the cell station in the cordless phone. So what we would do is put this, what's that?
It's more. It's more expensive, Jeff, right?
Yeah, yeah. So what we would do is we would put a cell station, which is the receiver for the, it's like the base station on the cordless phones you would get from Walmart. This is a base station on steroids, basically. It's, it's a cell station that, that can handle more than one telephone. And we would put that in the room where the PBX is, um, and set it up in there. And then you would have the cordless phone over on your side and it would wirelessly talk to that cell station over on the other side. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
Will, will this take care of the problem of them not having enough phones? You know, will it just tie up to one of the existing lines they have?
Yeah, so it would add, it would have its own extension number. It would, yeah, we program it to be one of the telephones in their group. So with access to the same telephone lines, the rest of their phones do.
So three of us could be talking at one time?
Now, how many telephone lines do you have? Or how many telephone numbers do you have to your operation?
Two numbers, yeah.
Still gonna have to get a third number.
We're gonna have to get a third number.
Oh, okay. Now, my understanding is that you have one in there, that they put one in there and it's just hanging out there.
There were a variety of numbers when, um, Mr. Curly was there. I, I don't know how that ties in.
I think there's, if I...
I think there's some numbers.
But I think right at the end of my walkthrough there, I found out that you guys had a CO line brought to that PBX and that it was marked on the block there and just needs to be connected to the PBX and programmed for your group. I think you've already got a CO line there that you can use that gives you a third number, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we may have to read groups, right, is, is to discover how many phone lines are in there. Because we had that question before, because the attorney had added several.
They had several lines.
So are we still funding that? Are we still... That's what we need to...
A little two phone line on there.
On there.
Their bill.
Like, yes, two phone lines.
And I know there's, I would assume that there's some issues that, you know, like, I don't know if these offices can transfer back and forth, but I don't think you want your county attorney, because of attorney-client privileges, being able to transfer back to the Extension Office and vice versa.
They haven't, we haven't ever done that. Does Focus take up those lines there now? See, it's, there's too many players down there. I can't keep it straight.
It almost sounds like we need to get one of the RT guys down there, that's through our phone writers through, and say, "Hey, whose lines go to where?"
We don't have RT though, I don't think, do we? That's why we went through RAGE. Or RAGE, but they send us, I think, to Collins. I don't remember.
Yes, please, do.
If I, if I may clarify a thing to you guys.
Thank you.
So, so that's your service, your telephone service. That would be your telephone number, three oh seven, seven four six, blah, 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 is a telephone line provided by a service provider like RAGE. It'd be just like with any kitchen phone in your home. You have a telephone number, you have a telephone attached to it. You could have three telephones if they're all attached to the same telephone line, it's a big party line in your house. The way business solutions work and the way that works in that building is, it goes to a PBX, which is private branch exchange. It's like a little mini telephone company inside your building. And so telephone lines come in and they're programmed to go out to however many extensions. In this case, we've got three entities that I know of in sharing that same telephone box. The number of CO lines or telephone lines that you have is dependent on, I mean, what you would base that on is how much traffic you anticipate needing to the outside world at any given time. If you think that you need to have three telephone conversations to somebody outside the building at any given time, yeah, you need three telephone lines. But having said that, you could have twenty extension, telephone extensions in that office sharing three telephone lines. Doesn't really matter. It's however you wanna set up. So just because you want to add a telephone does not mean, you know, a telephone presence at somebody's desk doesn't necessarily mean that you need to add a telephone line. They're not, they're not permanently connected to each other. It's all in the programming. In this case, I think you have a third telephone line that was brought in there. That was what was indicated to me right at the very end of when I was there. And I went and I looked and sure enough, I found a ID line from, from RAGE sitting on the block, but there, yeah, there is a telephone line sitting there that can be programmed into your stuff. Check with RAGE or RT or whoever it is to make sure, just ask them how many telephone lines you're paying for versus how many you've got access to off one of your telephones. And that'll tell you if there's an extra one there or not. Yeah, my understanding is that you guys need another telephone at a desk there, which is why we're talking about the cell station and the cordless phone is because physically wiring between where that position is and getting it to the telephone equipment on the other side of that brick wall is either going to require, you know, drilling through a brick wall and up and over, you know, all the cable routing, which is labor-intensive, or just putting in a cell station and a cordless phone. And, you know, that's an hour on site, if that much, I think that's spelled out in your, in the quote that we gave you on the labor part of that. There's the drive time, but there's also the onsite time, which is not that much.
So Jeff, let me do the simpleton here, because, so if we have, if we already have a phone line that's there, do we need, do we need this cell station?
Yeah, because the telephone line is only gonna go to the private branch exchange, the telephone box in there, and it will only provide you another telephone line to the outside world, even on the extensions that you have. So in other words, if you have two telephone, if you look on one of those phones and you see line one, line two, this just adds line three to that. Doesn't give you another telephone. It just gives you three lines to the outside world.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Is the bandwidth still limited to exactly what they would have with the two lines?
There's no bandwidth involved.
Okay, so they're not getting your Internet? No?
It's, it's not voice. It's not, uh, voice over Internet. It's just a telephone line.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for, go ahead.
Comment. Vicki, I was looking at your budget here and it just, I mean, we, we pinch you guys pretty hard anyways. And to me, it just seems like for, maybe spending, you know, fifty bucks a month for another phone line, six hundred bucks a year, when you look at some of these line items are, are right at three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars. And so, you know, if it's something that you absolutely believe you need and you're, you take that out from somewhere else, that's, that's one thing. But I'd really caution you against having that overhead. That's, that's the money that could went to your department for 4H kids' supplies or classes or travel that we're not gonna be able to put to that, so I guess think about that.
Are there any other questions for Jeff on the phone? Jeff, thank you very much for taking the time to answer a few of our questions. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Hi.
Yep. Bye-bye.
Yeah, I, I completely understand. And maybe, um, because it's more complicated, yeah. This phone, because one would kinda have RAGE come and then lose it, so, um...
I might jump in here. I don't know if there's an option, I don't know what's out there for business phones, but if, if you could get a wireless phone that would still allow you to transfer back and forth, you know, and then be able to take messages, I don't know if that would alleviate some of that. I mean, if, if we, I think you should have a phone in those offices. So if we need to drill a hole or do the cell phone station to get you hooked in, I don't, personally, I don't know how to wrestle more kills. But I don't have a problem with that. As far as, you know, can we use some technology to utilize those two phones a little better or some scheduling, maybe make the owner calls from three to four o'clock in the afternoon and tie up a line, plan a little bit maybe to, just to be cognitive of all those.
I, I still think you need to get with RT or whoever, because if there's a line there and that's, we're paying for it, then this would be the only upgrade that you would need to do that. But I mean, if there's a line there that we're paying for that we're not even utilizing, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me either. I mean...
Yes, what's...
If we're, if we're, if you're gonna go a different route, then maybe we shouldn't have that line at all. And that, it's not a lot of money, fifty bucks a year or whatever, or fifty bucks a month.
Hey, was, do you happen to know Vicki on, or do I need to check up? Do you happen to know how many lines they paid for on the other side?
No, but I should call and see, because, I mean, if that line's available and it can just go right onto her bill, we wouldn't even have to pay for this with call.
Well, well, I think you still have to get this...
I think they saw that, that is what they were describing.
With that other line, but you still have to have that cell connection.
Because the wall.
I could call, let's see. Do you mind?
No, I think so.
And yeah, let me, if you're okay, let me find out what Vicki tells me and then let me discuss it with them, you know, when I have to.
So we'll put it on the business sheet, huh?
Okay. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
I hope you understood it. It was, it was getting me too confused.
I got a better idea now, yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I appreciate you allowing us to call.
Have a good day. Thanks.
Thank you.
And it doesn't have to be today.
Okay.
Just if you can check, do it in the next week or so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Okay. First one, our old, old business is a credit card pre-authorization form. Any other chance of that? Any discussion on that? Any discussion on that? Just draft, I think, whatever change they draw. The only thing that I see that would happen is it becomes an after the fact. You know, I forgot.
Before, by the way, this is on.
So somewhere in, in here, perhaps it would be appropriate to have in there, this has to go before the coopers. Go ahead.
I think, I think there's gonna be, gonna have to be a little bit of a grace period on this that start changing habits, I think it's gonna take a little education. You know, maybe we approve one and have a formal letter that we send out and say, you know, we approved this after the fact. We're not going to next time.
You guys added it to the, your form that they'll have to sign. So when I send that out with them to sign, this will be with it.
Okay, but she'll send them to the departments anyway.
Did you get any input from any of the other departments to see if something makes for the year for now?
The county clerks have sent me what they do. A lot of them said that they don't allow credit cards at all. And some of them said they make a use of personal credit cards and.
Go ahead.
What, what's your thoughts on like a recurring item? Like, is there any way to pre-approve or recur, something that we knows?
Subscription or something.
Yeah. See, I think you could put a subscription in and allow for the dates to, to work out that way. So I think you could put in budget year to budget year. So you could put from, from July first to June, you know, and that, we could approve that at budget time and say, yeah, that's, you've got your form, we're, we're ready to go. And that would be the appropriate time, is the budget time.
More pay income, put a paper on Amazon, couldn't buy it.
Yeah, yeah, or, or more after. Let's not just go out there, you know, bullying.
That was, I mean, just like the, some annual subscription stuff, you know, that's coming every month. But they do on that, I didn't see no problem. Put a whole year for it's on one, then you get approved one time for the whole year.
Okay, well, let's, let's release this, put it out, and, uh, not a bad idea that, just to give them a heads up that it's happening and perhaps give them a grace period of the time or two going in.
Has Jeannie looked at that too, so the coordinates of what she's doing with our handbook or is there indeed to even have her see it? I don't know, just bringing it up so we don't have a.
It just would be part of the handbook. So when she comes, the next meeting to explain what's going on, we'll make her aware of this. If, if we haven't sent it to her, to be a part of.
Still like double work for it, yeah.
Right.
I guess, and when you put this out there, you know, feedback from the other department has to be nice too. If it's something that's, that needs to be tweaked or worked with, we can work with on that.
Because I, I know it has been an issue. And I know that other counties don't even laugh at it, so this has been an interesting period for us. Go ahead.
Like, good idea might be a good way to phrase it, get, get it out to the department heads and say, this is the path we're headed down, and do you have any requests or recommendations to approve it?
Any other discussion on that?
I'm just gonna make the motion to approve it, but it never hurts to have some. Becky did a great job on this, I think.
Does look good.
So let's put it on the old business again, to see if we get some feedback. And then have that. No, we'll let them take it, because sometimes there'll be times that'll take it out. And that'll be our job to do on the other end. Okay, the other before you is the Westlake County Maintenance Manager. Want to explain it?
Stephen, I looked over it. He said the only thing possibly that we can take off is the light cleaning. Said he didn't know if that would deter someone from applying. Said he could discuss it maybe after they applied. Said the light cleaning is a lot that he does, but said maybe he could discuss that in the interview. I just highlighted it, because that was the only thing that him and I discussed.
You're, you're, you're interested in this? I want you guys to discuss that. What do you think?
No, I, I would, I think discouraged somebody applying for, but I see where Steve took, where he tracks in mud and he would just, I mean, they said they'd ground in carpet, he'd grab it back and clean it up, you know. Be afraid of the wood dash, you know, just, occasional light cleaning, maybe something.
Minimal?
Spot cleaning.
So light clean, spot cleaning? Cause it's, I mean, it's not like you can just leave it.
I just said, like, occasional, that way. You know. Occasional light cleaning. That way it didn't sound like it's a all the time.
Well, it would be, you know, that is a maintenance thing. I mean, if you let the dirt stay, you're, you're destroying the fibers of the carpet, I would think that would be under your.
Well, and it's like when someone tracks in grease. That's what he does, I mean, he shank, comes and cleans it and, as we can, I mean. Not at all.
I like your good idea, occasional light cleaning.
Okay, good with that?
You're gonna do it.
I have a, I have a question, so he, I don't know, so he doesn't do the thing with the meat anymore? Somebody else does? Okay.
It's part time, so who took that?
He took that part off of his job description.
Yeah, wait, his whole time he could.
He's, he's still the one that does like grease that helps us put out. And the mud and.
Okay. You okay with that? I think we'll discuss that last one. All right, anything else on old business? I'll take some, is there?
I'm gonna go back to this, are we gonna put this on some digital media as well?
No, he's not like.
Oh, I always say Zillow, but that's a very easy one. Indeed.
I'll just talk to the, oh, I don't know.
Indeed, we don't.
Somebody looks in the newspaper for jobs.
I'll take care of it. Okay, any other discussion on that? Any other? Well, just, let's just take five minutes.
First the guy reading, he's reading the, I don't know, old school.
So, see, this still seems, yeah. Yeah, I think that's rough is the.
Pretty small crew, so you know.
I mean, they're.
It's not gonna ski either. Up to a couple days ago.
The full-time personnel do.
Those eyes are stuffed and cagging. Good reminder.
And mine is pretty thick.
Well, in a tough, tough situation, you know, you're trying to, which areas you say no to. He's got personality and character, but pretty much.
Yeah.
So even if he is loaded and somebody comes in desperate, like he's probably gonna pretend to. That stretches your opinion. Just stick to your, your tight schedule. Just relieve yourself, I think, from busy times. First thing is, yeah, deer all over, like, I would say, I would say a large percentage, I don't know, eighty percent, but probably close to. All the insurance work free to, you know, enter related. I mean, deer hits on deer ass.
You know, they're, they're really on my image right now too, I know.
So it's about options and the vision and the last bit. And kind of that, we ended up to rapid and then came back down from Sundance and that road, I mean, they're all over. And you've got enough of these, you know, that you can just come right along, you can't really.
Yeah. Yeah.
But for us, yeah, I mean, businesses is why it is, but it just depends on the situation. Do we got single vehicle families and stuff like that? Yeah. And the supply chain right now is, if I can get my parts, that's what makes my business happy.
Yeah.
And that slows down a little bit, that's about everything gets handed down a lot. Vehicle's gonna get done on time, you know, you're gonna get paid for it's done type thing. But business wise.
Yeah, I had to drop the truck off at Steve, at Steve. I couldn't believe. I don't know where he's gotta get that.
And Steve's good, we had, he said he had somebody, I mean, he started up new phone here quite a week or two ago, but didn't last very long. And so, independent, and all of that.
Yeah. Which is hard to find unless you're willing to pay.
Right.
Creditable amount of money.
And they're getting their job in that one.
On their own?
It's a, it's a balance, like, for sure.
Yeah.
Like, you know Brett Rang over at Stirkus? He used to work for Kevin Ford, Jocelyn Ford, and he was off selling cars. He's trying, he's trying, he's actually puts a building out for repairs. Although, half of the can. We're in. He's, you know, they're tired of.
That can be a question.
Well, we, we have to go there, explore, recall work on transmissions. We had some stuff done, said, well, we can only do this, and if we don't fix it, then we do this. What we did, we, a month ago, we were starting out with a, we were just, we were like sixty-five, eighty thousand.
That's a good thing, I remember when the eyes first came out, it was a pretty healthy recall on the left, power tie rod on all the amps. I mean, that was quite a few years that it covered. And we replaced them with danglins and, yeah, pretty much the whole, everything kind of pibbly under the knuckle. And then they set a toe on it, but I mean, those were backed up for, and then like either ten years with the recalls, because they were all missing design, you know, he was, that's the same design you, you started putting on the, the second gen, because it wasn't so well.
Second recall, they got, you know, you put some different clutches on the transmission. It may not fix it, but they run your own.
Well, and I don't even know on some of that, you know, like, like says, or you got transmission issues with. And as far as them having, I mean, their title, they just can't, but to have somebody actually do a tear on, on the transmission in-house. Like, they're like, well, do we have replacement on the shell or something like that? Some of those are, and then it's all corporate, again, because it's a, it's a four-point side, so they might have one across the street loading it, but that's not a four tranny, so.
Yeah.
The way that they shake cannons or rub shoulders is in their own way, and so it's limited. Pull the bolts out, about housing foot the other one back in, like.
Talking to a guy named Jay, he was hauling two haul truck tires.
I was just thinking.
But he couldn't do it in one day. Can't wait overnight. The Michelin tires.
It was all based on.
They didn't even do it. But they can't get more truck tires, and these guys need them. So he said they had to load in one day.
Look at, look at that.
Sleep in the sleep, and then drop off, load in the evening, drop off at home.
You know, that's the rest. You got, well, and the dealers, they have a, they call Spac Order, and they're, they'll have the dealership, and they'll have it when their supplier does, like, spag it out. It's another deal that might, you know, have it stop.
Okay, let's bring this back to the section. Yep, please. Next on is EMS special district legislation, rural health district legislation. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. But you're welcome.
So, I'm calling a lot from County Upton, clerk treasure, and I have with me two of our EMTs of the area. One of our maybe two EMTs left. And so we've been trying to find solutions for a couple of years for EMS for maybe a decade, because we just started losing volunteers, just like everybody else is, to its volunteers, and it's kind of a dying sport there. So we looked at some legislation for rural health districts, and wanted to present that kind of option to you guys as a county. If you're interested in that at all, or you're not just doing that. And then we have some new legislation coming out of Fremont County, from Senator KAC, to establish specifically EMS districts, because they're having a similar problem, a little different than we are, but, because Fremont County is so vast. And so it would take some of the petition process out of what a rural health district needs, that you have to have petitions signed. The EMS district would be something that the county could, the county commissioners could form, get the board set, and then go to the voters for the tax for the mills up to four. That stuff would always have to go there. We kind of just wanted to open the idea to you guys. And then the information that I sent, it does say dispatch on the, one of the pages, and it doesn't, it's not dispatch or spare. I just didn't change it when I said the budget, that's a rinse and repeat budget thing, so please don't hold that against me. But we presented this to the council at our last meeting. To me, I went through some numbers, some of the, the sources are included in here. On an average, how many runs per year, and maybe what that would cost, and if we charge what that brought in, and.
And that was just runs in, or is there up, that would have been county wide?
Yeah, this is just our numbers, so the one forty-nine, five forty-nine bottom line, this, it includes everything that you see there. We, we thought about maybe a housing allowance, because it wouldn't be something that, we don't have anybody who can be a full-time EMT, nor can we afford that, that's, this is very part-time, part-time, you'd be on call maybe for the forty hour or for a week, but it wouldn't be a regular forty hour paying job, like, at, at the regular wage. So we also have some contributions, fees for service at seventy percent of a hundred percent. We even get seventy thousand dollars, that was just kind of some numbers we were working with. And then at twenty thousand, that was, that's kind of the contribution that you guys made to our ambulance service now, or it had been in the, in the past. So that's where we made up the difference, and then the talent would create the difference. And this is just a started conversation, this is not something that we're even remotely looking at. We just needed to have the conversation so we knew where to go. And then the rural health district was a suggestion from, from Tiffany, which maybe is this better for all of us, I don't know. City Newcastle contracts with, with CCH. Maybe that's working for them, maybe it's not, but they're taking patients and ups and for free. Not for free, they're charging the patients and, and the city Newcastle's paying for that now, so we can't cover it. So I don't know if you guys had any questions, or you guys maybe wanna digest the information. It's not anything we expected this weekend, even in this year. I know you guys have a lot of people to sit in January. Um, and then the EMS district legislation, it's got a long road to go, um, it has to get through the whole session and not come out looking very, very different on the other side. And there's also some, like, uh, some national level legislation, just for a grant program now, um, nothing to sustain EMS. There's a problem on a national level, it's not just us, it's not just, um, the big cities, it's, it's everybody. And part of that is that volunteer, volunteerism is down, and then there's a, a statistic sheet on the second page. The open rate, uh, for, even for, um, apartheid paramedic, fifty-five percent of whoever they hold, they're looking for more than half of people to fill those spots. Um, and they're, and they're paying those people. So, um, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer, if you wanted to add anything, if you just wanted a little bit of your time to kind of put it out there to digest, and we'll be back, just so you know, but. This isn't just going away, it's a conversation we've been having, and we just have to have it at a bigger level now. Go ahead.
For me personally, I'll speak very much, I, I'd just like to be able to absorb this a little bit, break through it, and then if I have some questions, I might reach out to you on top of that. I think it's a lot to take in and absorb in a matter of a few minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for sending that.
Yep.
To there too early, so we could just go through it all. Um. It has been an issue enough for a lot of years. That salary, so you kind of envision having basically a part-time, or a couple of part-time people on call?
Four.
Four.
So two EMT. It, it would be two, two crews of two.
Okay.
And that's minimal, I mean, when we were running that place on six volunteer EMTs, it was hard, but we made it work. And, and that was people leaving their paying jobs, um, so when we did this model, these people are gonna also have to have other paying jobs. But they would be on call, on a schedule for the Town of Upton EMS.
Or whatever.
Two crews of two, and that, that would probably wear on those two crews of two.
Yeah.
I mean, if somebody got sick, or if somebody needed a vacation, or had a family emergency, that, that was bare minimum numbers.
I'm interested in garbage as an essential service, but, you know, a heart attack isn't.
That was hard to hear, um, that was from the listening session back in May, and they've done basically nothing that I've seen, um, that even the articles are, are from April. Uh, the governor set aside quite a bit of art of money for EMS districting and consolidation of those kind of things, dispatch thing kind of deal. Um, so we can get more bang for our buck, and nothing else has happened with the task force at all. And it was a room full of EMS and full of elected officials, and, and to find out that EMS is not an essential service like garbage, or sewer, or water, a hauler, great, and should be essential, um, that's why it's not funded at a bigger level. That's why it's left to volunteers.
Nothing just doesn't have the call log to, like, even if you try to contract with County Health, I mean, you're gonna spend three times that much probably to have staff somebody there all the time, just.
Well, so what Newcastle is paying them is a hundred thousand. So if they would, if they would sit and talk to us and staff Upton for a hundred thousand, I mean, Upton still couldn't afford a hundred thousand, but it was still under what we looked, what we came up with.
Yeah.
No, first, thank you for what you do, that's, it's a tankless job. Uh, two, two crews of two, you're gonna be full-time, I mean, that's, you would say part-time is the, the best. Nature of the beast is to be buried all the time with it, but I think it's something that's well, that's worth looking forward into, you know, pursuing down the road. You know, special legislative, thinking of something going to on that end of it.
And we would have come to you with a rural health district, it's something anyway, the EMS was just kind of a, a present dropped in our lap, so.
I mean, it's a start, until we start to avoid on which way to go, but appreciate it.
Do you think this would be something Commissioners Association would get behind?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I haven't seen much media that's coming through, um, Senator Case serves on corporations, so I guess we start there, maybe helping to, to, to. Not some of the corporations, I mean.
I think every county's got a, a, an area, there's all the states you're skilled at, there's, I mean, it's, it's a statewide issue, I'm sure.
It is, and some of the numbers that I got as far as wages and stuff go, because I wasn't sure what the wages are. Um, I got from the Johnson County Rural Health District, and we had a very good long conversation, they are running in the, in the black, they, they are keeping it afloat, and it works for them. They've contracted out Buffalo EMS to run their district, and it's, it's working well for them. Fremont County Rural Health, on the other hand, I, I just don't think they set it up right to begin with. That's where this bill came out of, and they're trying to fix what.
You know, and Fremont County is, it's just, it's a unique, and somebody's so huge.
Yeah.
You know.
And they contract out to an ambulance service out of Tennessee.
That would take some discovery of how that works.
Yeah, I think, I think they're running under the name Rocky, Rocky Mountain EMS Outbound Street, or something like that, but, yeah, they, they are based out of Tennessee.
Yeah, and I've seen, like, everybody getting the support and Cheyenne on this, for the bill going through, I don't see anybody. WCCA can't speak for them with a wham, but, you know, it's, it's a problem across the state.
It's a problem across the nation.
Yeah. Let's worry about our state first, let's not worry about the rest of them.
In Fremont County, where it even came from, is they have a quarter penny economic development tax in the city of Landau. And when this EMS, this rural health district is kind of failing, because only the county funds it, from what I understand, the city of Landau didn't want to take it out to mills and take it out to voters, because they don't lose their quarter penny economic development over providing EMS. They didn't, they couldn't make that choice, and that was one person at that level making that choice, and that's very key.
Question for you. The, you got this page here, it's got your district ground ambulance rates, and it's got rural health here, that was based off of Johnson County's?
I just received Johnson County's information.
Okay, and, and then Medicare is quite a bit less than that.
That's what Medicare will allow and what they will pay.
What they will pay, so.
So if, if the ambulance says, this nasal cannula costs us fifteen dollars, so we're going to bill this Medicare patient fifteen dollars, then Medicare says, no, we only allow ten. Then either the patient has to come up with that five dollars, or the EMS agency needs that five dollars.
And I would assume that this would look like you would just bill the patient for the rate, and then, you know, the cost, basically, so you, and then some of those, you're gonna, just like a hospital, you're just gonna write off some bad debts, and Medicare's getting in or something. Yeah.
We discussed in the budget to, um, ability service, because that's not something I'm qualified to do, or that we would be able to hire somebody to do, just to do that job that they build. September had fifteen calls, how much, how many has October had?
Five so far.
We can't expect somebody to live on that wage of fifteen calls one month and, and five calls the best.
Well, I think it's quite a maze to work through.
And Johnson County contracts about to someone else.
So the other alternative is this EMS, this legislation doesn't go through, there's the thought of the rural health.
It's, it's.
Um, and how do you, do you have any idea how that would fit in with our hospital district? I mean, would that switch it to hospital district, does it just, I'm, I'm not aware of.
They would, they would probably work together, but they would be two separate.
Okay.
It would be a completely new special district, then we draw the lines around the whole county, just like, probably the same footprint that they have.
Okay.
Still, yeah, different, different setting.
Okay, that'd be interesting to, to look into that.
To make it all work as one, and like to run an ambulance service on it, but I don't.
I tried that. And we'd like to, I, you know, I think it's a great place to pursue again, I just, I don't know if they're willing to have those discussions.
Yeah, they're, it's gonna be.
Great.
Because they're gonna see all the calls from the county.
Lots of them, yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
That's gonna get complex. Oh, my God.
We're looking for a call to see.
This is Drew.
Morning Drew, it's Becky.
Good morning.
Your own speaker.
Hi Drew, this is Marty, we're all here, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr., thank you for having me, and I'm sorry that you have to rearrange your, your, uh, a good plan always fails. Um, several things I wanted to give you an update this morning, and before I get started, can you just kind of give me an idea of who is in the room?
We have all, um, applied commissioners, we have our clerk, we have two, um, candidates for county commissioner. We have a reporter from the Gazette, and two other, three other guests. Oh, we have another reporter from, we are being videotaped from another newspaper, and then we have two other guests.
Okay, um, that's good information, thank you, I appreciate you letting me know that. So I just wanted to give you a few updates on some ongoing projects we have, and, um, just allow you the opportunity to take the appropriate action in between meetings. So the first is on the Black Hills National Forest Plan Revision. Um, we are still working through the MOU language, and we're working with Crook County on that. We're gonna discuss it with Crook County tomorrow, and I think once we get that done, and the Forest Service approves that language, we will then, um, get Weston County's MOU drafted into you. I still feel a bit critical that you pass the MOU in between meetings, but we, if we could put it on your December docket to look at that MOU, assuming that it's going to be ready, I think that that would be helpful. And mainly, the, the biggest part of the language is, one, making sure that, um, the language allows for me to participate as your representative, and have a seat at the table with Forest Service during the planning process. Two, it outlines, um, the authority for you to engage in the planning process, and three, that, um, just because you sign the MOU doesn't mean that you can't take further actions, um, if necessary down the road. So I just wanted you to know that, however you want to schedule it on your docket, I think that you still have time, you can just put it on your December meeting, and approve it there. But if it's done before that, I didn't know how you wanted to hear that.
Drew, we'll meet at the regular meeting on the fifteenth as well, November, I don't know if that would be ready for us by then or not.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Martin, it might be, so I think, I think you guys can just take care of it, that is the status of the MOU, and we'll either get it to you for the fifteenth, or in the December meeting. A quick update on Black Hills, so, uh, we went through our first round of draft assessments, we submitted our comments, in our comments, requested that a second draft of assessment be available for the public to review. That is a request that all of the counties made, and, um, the Forest Service is currently contemplating whether or not they're going to grant that request. So you have the discretion to either grant it, or move to the final. We had so many concerns with the draft assessment, that we're hoping they allow us to look at the corrections and modifications for a second round before they go to final. But we haven't officially gotten word yet from the Forest Service as to what they're gonna do. What they have indicated is that the final assessment, or the next round of assessment, will probably be ready sometime in January, which will then put us, um, I believe, with the new commissioners that will be coming on board. So at that point in time, I will actually use new designated from the commissioner that is willing to work with me on this.
Okay.
Any questions on the Black Hills?
Any questions from the board? I don't think so, Drew.
Okay, let's move on to the Newcastle V L M versus management plan revision. So, uh, there's a public meeting tomorrow night in Lux, it begins at, uh, from four to seven, and there's a short presentation at five. Um, I will be going over staff meetings, the public comment period did get extended, so the new deadline is November twenty-eighth. I have not started drafting your comments yet, because I wanted to go to the public meeting, so I will go over there, and then I will, um, draft your comments. I will work diligently to try to get those to you by Monday, November fourteenth. But in the event that you don't get them for your meeting on the fifteenth, they will need to be submitted on the twenty-eighth of November, which is before your December meeting. So I don't know how you want to schedule that, but it's gonna be really important that we get comments in by the comment period deadline. What will happen if we don't is, is the agency will read them, but they won't be part of the public record. So we just need to make sure that we have a process in place for hitting those deadlines.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Drew.
And you might have already given me your board in the autumn meeting, um, for those comments to be submitted, because we've had two extensions since then, so Becky, I don't know if I'm gonna look back at that or not, but I'll do my best to try to get them to my fourteenth of November.
Drew, I'm really quite sure that we did give approval of those comments, but we'll, we'll go find them in a minute.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, the only other question I had is, uh, I don't believe you have signed the MOU with V L M yet. Um, Niagara has not, Crook County stuff that they had, but I've only seen a draft. And so if you have not signed the MOU for V L M, I would just like to make a request that we coordinate the language between the three counties, um, just to make sure they're fairly consistent. In particular, language that allows me to be your representative to sit at the table and represent you. So do you know if we signed the MOU with the V L M for the Newcastle R O T?
I don't believe we have.
Okay. Um, Becky, if we could just follow up on that and make sure, then I will try to coordinate with the three counties on language, and we'll get the MOU then. The status of the V L M document, we're gonna get a new status update tomorrow, but what I know today is that, um, the notice of intent to start the E I S has been delayed, so they're looking at next spring or second quarter before that NEPA process starts. So this is a friendly reminder, we're all in pre-scoping, we haven't even started the official NEPA process yet, so we'll just want to make sure that we get the MOU done probably by the end of the year. And I'll, I'll talk to V L M tomorrow night and confirm the status. Any questions on the Newcastle R O T?
Any questions? I think we're good, Drew.
Okay, um, Thunder Basin, so I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we're doing with Thunder Basin. Um, we've been having a series of meetings on implementation of that project. Uh, as a friendly reminder, a refresher from last year, the plan was approved in December, November, December of twenty twenty. We went into implementation in twenty-one. Um, we did conduct play management in the summer of twenty-one. In the fall of twenty-one, there was a lawsuit filed by N D O's. And control and treatment starts October first, and goes through the end of January. Around the end of October, first part of November, the Forest Service made the decision to pull back and not conduct further treatment. Based on litigation, it was not a judge's order, there was, there was no stay, uh, it was a Forest Service decision to do that. So we treated for a month, and then we didn't treat for three months. Now, we come to the summer of twenty-two, um, numbers are creeping up to the ten thousand dollar target, or the ten thousand acre target of perinogs inside Management Three Six Seven. Um, flag management, both Delta Death and St. Ronald were both applied, uh, late summer, early fall of this year. We are doing controls, so control will happen October through January of this year. The problem that we're having now is funding, and we started a specific funding subgroup, of which I am caring. The problem that we're having now is funding. And we started a specific funding subgroup of which I am carrying to try to figure out ways to get a more consistent stream of funding to implement the plan. And, um, we will be looking at all options and opportunities to make sure that we get enough funding to implement mapping, plague management, and control and treatment because those are the three things that the plan requires. Uh, the Thunder Basin Prairie Eco System Association, Tabby, they have been doing a lot of mapping and been trying, have been trying to come up with mapping funding. Um, but I think mapping, they're going to start seeing some shortages there. So, we're doing anything we can to figure out how to raise enough money to, um, make sure that we can implement the plan in total and in whole every year. But I do suspect that in the next year, you're going to see Prairie Dog, um, numbers exceed the ten thousand acre target. And as we all know, when you start getting into the twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand acre target span, um, it gets virtually impossible to control. So, there's a lot more that goes with that discussion, but I just wanted to give you an update of where we are. And next week, we will have a meeting regarding mapping efforts. There is some discussion about in the future, trying to figure out ways to be more cost-effective with our mapping efforts. But mapping is kind of the premise of the whole plan, so we need to make sure that we have accurate mapping numbers. But we'll be looking at new technology in the future which could reduce the cost of doing our annual mapping efforts. But right now, we are still going out on the ground and doing GPS and, and, uh, kind of on-the-ground, ground-tracing type stuff. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's where we're at with the Thunder Basin. Is there any questions?
I do have one. Drew, this is Marty. Um, in the supplement, I mean, in the budget bill last legislative session, there was amendment for the good neighbor policy and it got voted down. Our senator voted it down. Is there a chance that, um, that we could try again to, to maybe even a supplement budget? That was part of the ARPA funds. Um, I don't know how much or what is left or, but can we talk about, um, if we get the Prairie Dogs out of control again, we're in trouble. So is there, I mean, is there any way to, to tap into the good neighbor funds again or try?
Mr. Urban, that's a really great question and, um, I, I think we can always try. And, um, just so you know, we've also initiating, initiated discussions with the congressional delegation. Um, we did have a phone call with Senator Lummis's office this morning to see if they could also assist us in finding opportunities, um, through grants or through some of these major spending bills that we've seen coming out that, that we could apply for something. So, uh, good neighbor policy, good neighbor agreement did come up in the conversation, but we have to explore whether or not the funding is there and whether or not we qualify.
Well, I just think it's odd, we can, we can fund the rodeo team, but we can't, we can't get rid of the Prairie Dogs. Okay, thank you.
And, and you're correct. I mean, we're, we can't get them under control, we're headed for another plague event. So, um, it's really important that we find enough funding to consistently implement the plan to see if these ideas that we came up with would work.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you, um...
I do have one more issue that I just want to ask you about. Um, most, all of the counties that I, uh, am engaged with have received letters from the V L M regarding the initiation of the, yet again, another round of state grouse, uh, supplemental E I S. And whether or not you want to be a cooperating agency and getting your MOU in. Have you ever seen that request?
I haven't seen it. We haven't seen it Drew.
Okay, you should be seeing it. I believe that the letter would be like October twenty fifth. Um, most of the other counties have received it, including Niobrara and Crook and Converse. So my question to you is, I, I need to contact the governor's office, but if there is a way, um, to apply for some type of funding and maybe consolidate resources with the county and be a cooperating agent at the table and maybe hiring me to assist you with that effort, is it, I will look at those options, um, is it something that Weston County would be interested in?
What's the board? Do I have no idea, Drew?
I think so.
To be a cooperative agency.
Or be a cooperating agency, we just need to sign in to.
Right.
And so what we would do is have Drew do such. I think that's a yes.
I will look at our options, um, and if there's multiple counties that want representation, there may be a very cost-effective way to do this through the NEPA in the governor's office.
Just let us know.
Before you sign the MOU, let me look into those options because if we're going to consolidate, um, efforts and then from one consultant representing you, the other thing is, is we'll be, we'll be dealing with this indirectly anyway or directly, um, through the Newcastle Plan Amendment Process. But being a operator in the state grouse E I S would not factor into that project. So, I just need to figure out the details and just see what we're going to land and then I'll bring it back to you for consideration, um, and you can decide your next step.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well thanks Drew. Do you have anything else for us?
I don't, I think we covered it all.
Okay, well thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thanks Drew. Bye.
Thanks Becky.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Should we move Michael forward?
Yeah, do it next.
Just for your neighborhood, uh, what do you think, just be aware if we get those, like those Prairie Dogs pick up again?
Yeah, they're already on the, they're already on that.
How long did they take to get there?
Well, Plague went through two years ago. Three years ago, there's nothing to burn out there in Thunder Basin. Two years, two years, the numbers already climbing after Plague went through.
The moon's been there. Okay, Michael, Drew.
Ease my discussion?
Okay, yeah. So, obviously, I'm sure you guys were copying on, um, Mayor Walt Terry's email regarding easements and the contract and we need to get this contract done. Although I admit that this contract hasn't even been done. I'm not sure why the county, Terry's office wasn't covering on the emails since, and we're going to be helping with that contract. I was working, I had a talk with Ms. Walt Terry a bit this last fall. I asked for terms on what she wanted in the contract, um, but they were, I've never given, been given any specific terms. So, you can't just write a contract that doesn't have any terms. Um, so that's what I, one of the things I wanted to discuss for you today is what exact terms you would want in this contract for this fifty pair easement. If you guys just don't want to go through with it, um, you know, you just can't write it out of thin air. So, I noticed on the copy, I didn't get the page on the back for some reason, a proposed agreement that really didn't say anything, it was given to Sheriff Coburn on nineteenth of October. Sheriff, could I use your original? I'll make sure we get it back so, I don't know why we didn't get that last page either. There's nothing on the page. This is what was given, you guys will take a look at that. Uh, there's, to me, that would not cover even basic legal principles.
Oh, that one?
And it doesn't have any, like, consideration and I don't know whether the board agreed to the term of it. Um, what you guys want to charge for the use of it. Um, so that's what I, I mean, this, this is kind of, I guess, a start maybe, not really. Um, because this term had the nineteenth of October, twenty twenty-two to the nineteenth of October, twenty twenty-five. So if we can get those specifics in there. I don't know if Sheriff Coburn has any input on the, on the terms or what's going on here, but...
One of the things I would like to see on the terms is, this is making a couple assumptions that this is not a defect that's in the future, uh, for us utilizing that fifty pair line. Talking to range, it shouldn't, you could say it wouldn't. So, terms like that where, you know, if that affects our, our future use of it, that we would have the ability to pull out of that, you know, those kind of things. And then, I would say you probably don't get to pull out of that. At any time if you need to, there should be some language in there on that.
So, did you get that, Michael?
Yes.
So, your question, go ahead.
The other thing is, I'd like to say about this is, I, I talked to Mike, um, about this and it, I went and I asked our clerk whether or not we went, whether or not Commissioner Barton made a motion on the May seventeenth to put this thing forward. I, I, I'm not siding with the, as I already told you, I'm not siding with the city. My, my problem, my, my problem with this is that, it's another step where I, I wish he would have come to us sooner and said, hey, I don't have enough information. Instead, we had to, we've got a letter out there which we can deal with, but we should have followed up on it as commissioners too, so I, I apologize for that because I seconded the motion that Barton made to start this easement agreement. We shouldn't be waiting until, uh, the last minute to chase these things down. Where the city's waiting on us to do this and whether or not she is or isn't is irrelevant. We should have followed up sooner than May seventeenth to get this thing where you needed to make a contract for it. So my apologies to you for that, not following up on that and, uh, not giving, not giving you the information because I was unaware that you needed information. I think that goes back to the communication thing that we just need to get better at.
That's fair and I did ask for some terms from Mayor Walt Terry and, uh, there was really no response until she gave Mr. Bryan. So if we can just agree, I guess, on opening communication up better. Well, let's you know, I think I got an email from Mr., because I asked why isn't the attorney involved, Mr. Hughes. And I think I got an email from him Friday, uh, I haven't had a chance to look at it because I've been in court basically every day the last two weeks, so, um, so I'll, I'll take a look at that and maybe he has some more terms he wants, but I want to know what you guys want.
In, in fairness, just so you know, I, I reached, I reached out after I talked, I had talked to Pam and there was no communication between you and their attorney. So, just as you had said, that's, that's a failure on all of our parts to, to step up for it. I, I've got the email that she sent where she said, oh, I guess we never made it to her attorney. Uh, this was all back and forth conversation, so I don't necessarily think that you, you know, that letter was a little bit harsh on you, um, but I think some of that would go away, like I said, with better communication than all of us.
Here's, sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, this is what Newcastle wants, it's still isn't what we want. So I don't know that this is our failure in any format. I, if they wanted it, they need to go to Michael, get it done and I, I don't see Michael doing anything wrong with it. They wanted the line, followed through with getting the line finished.
But we did make a motion on May seventeenth to have him do an easement agreement, which we gave him no information, apparently he needed to complete that. So that's the only failure that I see on our part, that we should have given him the information he needed.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, on that point there, uh, I was in here when that happened and the city engineer was supposed to do, to provide us with some of this, you know, I needed to know if that tower can handle that lateral load, those kind of things, and we agreed to let them. And I never got any information back from him and then now he's gone. So I think part of that communication issue is that they left. I mean, I had to get everything back to, uh, wherever I could find it, you know, like there. On that part of it anyway, that, at that time, um, we needed information from the city engineer, we just, yeah, we signed it.
It was the city wanting it, they should have been bird dogging it, because I, I don't feel Michael's really doing anything wrong.
I don't know.
What's our next step? Well, I mean, we got to have a general idea. You guys want some consideration cash, you know, for it or is this going to be, you know, just, you know, used by permission? If you want to term it, especially if Brian's concerned about not affecting it in the future, so. I don't know if you guys have any ideas or thoughts like that or...
I think when we were discussing it, we were talking about any financial gain off the deal. And I think Tony, when Sheriff Coburn was in that discussion, was, that was our major concern was just them figuring out if it would affect anything and I think that's the rule that needs to happen now. And, but I do agree in a term that protects us and, and an ability out that maybe they can figure out too, that protects them, but, I don't know, rest in board field, but...
We don't want to have to put a new fifty pair line in within five years, yeah. We've got to have one, we've had one there in the giveaways.
Number five, you're basically told them neither party liable for any damage or anything, which I, if something happens to our building because what they done or do, we, this re, we have no recourse.
That's one of the things I was concerned about is that lateral load on that power. I'm not that guy. But if it does damage to it or give lensworm or something like that, that doesn't, that doesn't...
I don't, I'm not comfortable with number five in here at all.
Okay.
So, we'll start with the term, no financial compensation and then, uh, what do you want to get on the fifteenth? And see if we can... Have a form for us or... Yeah, see if Mark and I can get some work together by then.
Hughes?
Yeah, Mark Hughes.
Go ahead, and then you.
Yeah, who do we, or it should be on the city to get an engineer to, yeah, it should be part of that before we do any.
It's probably without saying, I'm good with no financial compensation unless there's some cost burden to the county for installing it, which that should go back around as well.
Anything else you want to add?
I think that's the two biggest concerns I have is if it affects us in the future, we were going down. And B, um, can that tower handle it and if it ends up damaging our, you know, the county's property?
So we need to still get that information.
Yeah, I have not received any information on that. I don't know if anybody has.
So I think that's important for us to know.
Do they not have an engineer? I don't know.
Maybe, Michael, if you don't mind, just reach out and say, you know, we do need to know that that tower can handle that load.
Sure.
And say you can work on that while we're working on this agreement.
Be a good start.
Go ahead.
Now, yeah, I know we need some language in there, you know, if, if down the road, if Brian or whoever's sheriff needs more phone capability and we need more cable, you know, that they would be responsible for putting that in. Since we gave, since we don't, gave this fifty pair up, we've got to, you know, you know, just object, you know, the sheriff's office down the road.
Okay, anything else, anything else for you?
No, I just wanted to make sure we're moving along here and... And hopefully we can get this issue resolved.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else? Thank you very much for that. Okay, our next is until 12:30. We'll take a break till 12:30.
Here's Brian Warren.
Okay, let's bring this meeting back in. If everybody would find their seats, we'll resume this meeting, please. That is on, do we make, everybody's here? Okay, our 12:30 is a commissioner's statement as requested by our counsel, Tucker Ruby. This statement first, the board of county commissioners will not be taking any questions at this time due to continuing litigation. All and any questions can be directed to our attorney, Tucker Ruby, at 307-684-5528 and/or email him at truby, that's T-R-U-B-Y, all small letters, at johnsoncowy.com. Here's our press release. "We, the county commissioners of Weston County, have always represented our constituents with integrity and transparency. In an effort to further that tradition, we wish to clarify a few misconceptions about our vote on October 19th, 2021, to replace Wyoming House District 2, Representative Hans Hunt. In choosing our method of voting, the commissioners of Weston, Goshen, and Niobrara Counties followed the example from the Republican Party Committee precinct members who selected the replacement candidates during their meeting on October 14th, 2021. It was never our intention to violate the Open Meetings Act or to deliberately hide our vote. We voted by written ballot to allow each commissioner to vote for the candidate they believed to be the most appropriate to fill the vacancy without pressure or influence. We do not regret this decision, but we do believe that we should have included our names on our ballots to verify for who. We did not and do not intend to hide our vote. We were merely following the example and precedent that was set and followed by others. Any delay on our part was a result of not knowing how to handle the situation and nothing else. We thank you for your understanding and the opportunity to serve as your commissioners." I will now read the votes. Commissioner Barton, voter for J.D. Williams. Based on the statements made by the candidates, I felt, I'm speaking as, I felt that J.D. Williams would be more impartial representative and do what is right for all the constituents in Wyoming District 2. Commissioner Erman, voter for J.D. Williams. I believe he was a strong candidate and during the redistricting process, I wanted Weston County to be entirely in one district, which would have made this representative not our representative. It did not make sense to have a representative from Weston lose their seat because of redistricting. Therefore, I believe it made sense to elect a strong candidate that would have stayed in District 2. Sadly, our work to improve all of Weston County in one district did not happen, but I stand by my vote as I believe it is proper. Commissioner Taylor, voted for Alan Slagle. I thought J.D. Williams was a strong candidate, but during his interview, he stated, I don't want to be here and I'm voting for someone else. After hearing that, I believe that Alan Slagle was a better candidate and one for whom my constituents would have wanted me to vote. Commissioners Todd, voted for Alan Slagle. During J.D. Williams' interview, he was the strongest candidate, but multiple times he stated he didn't want to go to Cheyenne. While I believe this was an attempt to appear as a best candidate by showing humility and a reluctant willingness to serve, it affected my vote. Commissioner Wagner, voted for J.D. Williams. All of my constituents that contacted me expressed that they had favored J.D. Williams as a best candidate, and I tried to vote in accordance with what had been expressed to me by my constituents. I will again read the statement I stated this comment with. "The board of commissioners of county commissioners will not be taking any questions at this time due to continuing litigation. All and any questions can be directed to our attorney, Tucker Ruby, at 307-684-5528 and/or email him at truby@johnsoncowy, let me spell it out for you, T-R-U-B-Y@johnsoncowy.com. Oh, not com, dot C-O, correct. Okay.
Dot U-S.
U-S. Oh, I wrote this wrong. It's U-S. Let me read it again. We will also, oh, you gave it one? Do you need to, for me to say that again to write it on the bottom of that? Oh, you got it?
I got the email.
Okay. All right, we will take public comments on any other subject rather than this. So we will open it up for public comment. Okay, is there anything else to be brought before this board? All right, this can be moved to a turn. Thank you.